Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the March 15th, 2016 Post Falls City Council Meeting. We started the evening with a workshop on snow removal, which based on today's weather may have been an appropriate thing to do. After the big snowstorms we had this winter, we did inform people that we would be meeting on the existing policy, looking to tweak and improve it. And a good presentation from our Public Works Department, Streets Department, so thank you very much, and more to come on that. Clerk will note that all council members are present. And tonight we have a special presentation. I'm going to step down from the ideas and ask Eagle Scout Evan Fow to join me in front. Several years ago Mayor Larkin started recognizing Eagle Scouts in our community, which is an outstanding thing to do. Eagle Scouts contribute so much to our communities and the amount of time and work that goes into you achieving that rank is very impressive. Evan said that his Eagle Scout project was putting in a garden at the senior center in Coeur d'Alene. Sorry Allison, but he went to Coeur d'Alene, but he got it done. So we congratulate you for that. We have a certificate for you and a buck knife that when you get home feel free to open it up and take a look at the engraving on it. And for myself and the city council, we want to congratulate you on your great achievements. Well done.
You get bonus points for being as tall as the mayor.
Thank you very much having another outstanding young man in our community. Tonight we have a couple of proclamations as well. First is the fair housing proclamation. Bear with me. Whereas April 2016 marks the 48th anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act. And whereas the Idaho Human Rights Commission Act has prohibited discrimination in housing since 1969. And whereas equal opportunity for all regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin is a fundamental goal of our nation, state, and city. And whereas equal access to housing is an important component of this goal as fundamental as the right to equal education and employment. And whereas housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability. And whereas housing choice impacts our children's access to education, our ability to seek and retain employment options, the cultural benefits we enjoy, the extent of our exposure to crime and drugs, and the quality of healthcare we receive in emergencies. And whereas laws of this nation and our state seek to ensure such equality of choice for all transactions involving housing. And whereas ongoing education, outreach, and monitoring are keys to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities. And whereas only through continued cooperation, commitment, and support of all Idahoans can barriers to fair housing be removed. Now therefore I Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of the City of Post Falls, Idaho, do hereby proclaim April 2016 to be Fair Housing Month. The next is the proclamation for March for Meals Month. Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Acts of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas Meals on Wheels America established a national March for Meals campaign in March 2002 to recognize a historic month, the importance of Older Americans Act nutrition programs, both congregate and home-delivered, and raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. Whereas Older Americans Act nutrition programs, both congregate and home-delivered in Idaho, have served our communities admirably for more than 40 years. And whereas volunteer drivers for Meals on Wheels programs in Idaho are the backbone of the program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to homebound seniors and individuals with disabilities, but also carry in concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas Meals on Wheels program in Idaho provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout the state and help them maintain their health and independence and avoid unnecessary hospitalizations and/or premature institutionalization. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Idaho provide a powerful socialization opportunity for millions of seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Idaho deserve recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to local communities, our state, and our nation. And now therefore I Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of the City of Post Falls, Idaho, do hereby proclaim March 2016 as March for Meals Month in Post Falls. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict? No. Seenan, would you present the consent calendar, please?
Item A is minutes from the March 1st, 2016 council meeting. Item B is payables February 23rd through March 7th, 2016. Item C is request to go out for bid for the 2016 ceiling projects, and maps were included for you to see in that also. Item D is off-site improvement waiver request for 1305 North Idaho Street. Item E is approval for the fiscal year 2017 budget hearing notification. Item F is Ashton Villas subdivision master development agreement extension. And item G is Aspen Woods subdivision construction improvement agreement.
Are there any questions?
I got a couple of questions. Shelley, on item C, I noticed that one of the streets or one of the areas that was slated for chip ceiling this year is that Ponderose area where Avista did their work last year?
Correct.
Are we doing that because of what Avista?
Yes. So we're going in there, we're still working with Avista, and I believe Russ has another meeting scheduled to meet with Patty and Sue.
We are in the process of setting up another meeting now and trying to find the right time, I guess.
As far as I understand it, it needs to be done either way, it's just a matter of who's paying for it.
It does, it does. It's going to be done one way or the other, we're just looking for a contribution from Avista to assist us with the overlay.
Where is that?
Ponderose.
Oh, okay.
Another question now.
Add another question on item F. This is kind of a crazy question. But I noticed that one of the streets in the Ashton Villas subdivision is named Knob Creek, which is a trademarked name. Do we run into any kind of issue when we do something like that?
Typically not. It's typically, if it's a trademark infringement, it's because it's a product that's so closely related that it could confuse the purchaser here, a street, and a beverage, shall we say? That would be a different thing. So I don't think that that's a problem. Typically the county checks the names of roads to make sure that it's not so close to another road in the county that it's going to cause confusion. Those checks happen, and that's occasionally you'll run into that problem.
Okay. Entertained a motion.
I'll move. We approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Seenan and Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
We should pass this, thank you. Now I'm going to go back, because I skipped. And I'd like to say I skipped to give my voice a rest, but I actually just forgot. Mayor's announcements. The Post Falls Senior Center Gold Rush 2016 is this Saturday, March 19th, at the Greyhound Parks and Event Center. Tickets are $30 per person, and the night includes dinner, live entertainment, and a silent auction. All proceeds from the event go toward the Post Falls Senior Center and Meals on Wheels program. Again this year, the city council and I, along with the Police Department and Kootenay Fire and Rescue, will be helping to prep and deliver Meals on Wheels. I want to thank Councilors Linda Wilhelm, Carrie Thorson, Alan Wolf, Lynn Borders for joining me to help kick off the 5th Annual March for Meals campaign. Park and Recreation Department is holding a bridal fair on Saturday, March 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Trailhead Event Center in Camellum Park. This is a great opportunity to see what the local community has to offer for a bride's special day. For more details, contact the Park and Recreation Office at 773-0539. The 12th Annual Post Falls Tree Giveaway is scheduled April 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Camellum Park Boat Launch. We will have more details later about the types of trees to be given away this year. And I think that is it on the announcements. So apologize for getting out of order. Next item on the agenda is public hearings, and tonight we have none. Next up is unfinished business, and we have none. Citizens issues, this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address a council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. If anyone wishes to speak, we ask you to come forward, state your name for the record. It's Flowers. Five minutes, we'll listen, give you five minute time.
Bob Flowers, good evening, folks. I'm not sure if this is the proper form to bring this up, but I was at a P&amp;Z meeting last week and asked them to consider part of a rezoning that they were doing. And it was basically, they were told by legal counsel that as long as these requests made a certain criteria, they had no choice but to approve it. Now, if this is the case, and I mean, it's on film, so you all can see it yourself, but if this is the case, why even have a public hearing about something that the city says makes this criteria? And the P&amp;Z board is going to approve it, they have to approve it by the rules. Why even bother with a public hearing? In fact, why even, since the city staff is the ones that prepare the report on it, why not just have the city staff approve it? It just doesn't, it doesn't make any sense that they've taken the leeway away from the P&amp;Z board, that they cannot turn it down if they feel that it's not appropriate. As long as it makes a certain criteria, they have to approve it. It just made no sense to me. And so sometime I'd like to understand it better, whoever could explain that to me. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. We will take a look at that and be back in touch. I can't comment because I didn't see it, but I do know the P&amp;Z on many occasions will turn stuff down, so we will get information for you.
Mr. Wilson, are you familiar with the?
I am.
Can you, it doesn't have to happen right now, but maybe send us a briefing, an email or something like that?
Sure, I can be happy to. And actually, it's one of the things that I would like to do in the near future is a bit of a training seminar with both council and Planning Commission about what the Idaho Local Land use Planning Act requires that we do in our approval process. So I will put together a brief memo for you, and then we'll touch base on some training in the future.
And if that's a public meeting, if we could make sure Mr. Flowers?
Certainly, and I'm happy to give Mr. Flowers a call and explain to him what I was talking about.
And it will be a public meeting because of having all those people present.
Right, yep. So you will be notified, Bob. Anybody else? See none. Next item up is new business. First item is the annual financial report by Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency. Mr. Lee, presenting.
Mayor Jacobson, good evening, council, good evening. Very happy to be here tonight to provide you this annual review update. This is something that we're required to do. We're also required to go to school to learn how to use this technology, but I miss this class. We have an annual report that's required to be provided by March 31st of each year. This is under state code. Operations of the agency are, we work through leased space across the street in the upper floor of the Chamber of Commerce building. And the agency works through three middies, finance and policy, district review, and communications. And they usually meet on an as-needed basis, and usually the week before our monthly commission meeting, we do have a workshop. Now, this report tonight, even though it says this is a report activities for the preceding calendar year, part of this report will touch on the fiscal year activities. In Post Falls, we have five remaining districts that are currently open. We closed, in 2012, we closed the Riverbin District. You can see from left to right, the Center Point District, out where Cabela's and Walmart are, and then the Expo District, West Seltice District, and that is where ATC Manufacturing recently moved into, built a 40,000 square foot building. Then we have the City Center District, and then to the far right is the East Post Falls District. And each of these districts, as public infrastructure is built and paid for by the proponent developer, then new business comes in, and it's either new business or existing businesses are expanded and additional real estate taxes are paid to the county. And then the county in turn sends those new, on the new construction, the taxes on new construction, they send that to the agency, and that's where we develop our increment. And the district, the data here shows each of the districts. East Post Falls, we have, we actually have three sub-districts. The South Central area was the first district formed, and then that was in 2002. In 2005, they expanded that and added Tullamore District, the sub-district. You can see when the districts were created, with the earliest one being 1994, City Center, and the most recent being 2005 for Tullamore, and then West Seltice II. Shows the increment received on the calendar year for each of those districts and the remaining balance, the obligation balance. As this increment is received and remitted monthly to the agency, it's paid semi-annually to the district proponent developer and applied to this outstanding obligation balance in the far right column. At this time, Tullamore Commons II and West Seltice II are the only districts that may fall short on projected increment to pay off their outstanding obligation balance. You can see that it shows Tullamore Commons II, $325,000, West Seltice, $1,001,019. The remaining term and the increment that has been coming in the last couple of years, we look, we're looking at that probably falling short. So they will, when the district closes, if they're short on being reimbursed for their expense, that's the way it is, they just suffer that loss. On City Center, you see obligation balance, $794,000. East Post Falls, South Central, obligation balance, $7,076,000. Those two balances are actually loan balances. That's what we had in City Center, the loan with Community First Bank to do the Spokane Street renovation. And the $7 million is the current loan balance as of this date for the East Post Falls, and that was, that comprised primarily the Greens Ferry Overpass Project and Spencer Street Project. Because both of those are in East Post Falls District, so we wrapped up the funding on those into one loan. On the tax increment by district, you can see a three-year comparison of tax increment as received by the districts. Most of the districts dropped from 2013 to 2014, and then picked up again in 2015. Now this is actual tax increment that we received in the year 2015 for each of the districts and the sub-districts. We don't anticipate that increment going down. On the contrary, in West Seltice II, we show $135,000 in tax increment. That does not include any tax increment coming from the new construction from ATC. So that tax increment will increase over there. East Post Falls North, they continue to build more residential over there, so we anticipate that will come up. And East Post Falls, South Central, we anticipate that increment will be coming up also. Now that the overpass is done, we're getting more traffic, we're looking at the potential of increased commercial expansion in that area. And that in turn will result in higher increment. Center Point is looking at, they're doing a lot of discussion out there, they've got some things on the drawing board for commercial expansion. So we're anticipating that increase also. On the financial highlights, these page, this page, the numbers on this page are based on fiscal year end, not the calendar year end. The audit that we had was on the fiscal year end. The agency, as you can see on the numbers here, agency aggressively managed cash to fund the projects and utilized bank loans in City Center and East Post Falls districts. In 2015, there was a reduction in cash, you can see from $5,300,000 down to $2,900,000. So there's a reduction in cash of $3.8 million, plus an increase in the loan balances liability on the loan from $767,000 up to $7,808,000, plus the increment revenue of $4 million, over $4 million dollars. So all of that money combined went to fund the district projects to the tune of about $13 million dollars. That covered the Greens Ferry Overpass Project, Spokane Street Project, and the Spencer Street Project. And there's about $1,003,000 left over that went to fund reimbursement to the other districts that were the normal semi-annual reimbursement. And then our actual operating expenses, you can see bottom line there, in 2014, our budget was $168,000, and 2015, it was $177,000. Excuse me, well, not budget, but actual expenditures. We came in less than budget on both 2014 and 2015. So some highlights of the year. In the year, one of our commissioners, Samantha Babbage, moved from the area and resigned in July. Her husband had a job changed, so she had to leave the area. We brought in Jamie Davis as a new commissioner in August to fill the seat through the end of the term, which is December 2016. Thomas LeRiviere, LeRiviere Construction was awarded the bid for the Spencer Street Extension Project in July. The majority of that work is complete, and just this week, so a couple of things here may be outdated already. And this is the way, how it works with us, it's just about on a daily basis, the picture changes. Majority of the work is complete, the railroad crossing and signal installation at Seltice Way, and Spencer Street remaining. First thing this week, BNSF had a crew out there building the railroad crossing at Spencer Street. And that was a really great sign, because we've been waiting for a couple of months for them to get out there and get on that work. So we anticipate that work, the rail crossing being done maybe by the end of the week, and then LeRiviere will have to come in and do a saw cut on the asphalt and then pour up into the concrete planking. Once that crossing is complete, we can turn on the lights, those are already installed, the signalization is already in place. We can turn those on, and that will be good to go on that. There may be some minor punch list items that we need to finish, and that depends a little bit on the weather. Spokane Street Revitalization Project is substantially complete in August. Total project cost paid in 2015 were $326,000. We paid in January an additional $900,000. Not on Spokane Street, I'm sorry. On Spencer Street, we paid an amount of $900,000 in January. Spokane Street, we've got the punch list pretty much done. We've got substantial completion and acceptance by the city engineering. So we should be able to close out that project very shortly. Construction Greens Ferry Overpass is substantially complete in November. We had our grand opening ceremony. Final work will be completed by May. Their contract shows final completion by May 16th, I believe. And we do have punch lists. There's some final things that will need to be done, and again, like hydro seeding, some painting on concrete, that remains to be done. Total expenditures in 2015 for those three projects was $12,298,000, and funds to the district projects was in excess of $13 million. And like I said, the funding difference went to agency operating budget and obligation distributions to other districts. So I appreciate listening to this presentation tonight, and I would stand for any questions.
Any questions, Tom?
Have a quick one, just on your last one there. On the increase in operating expenses from 14 to 15, it's about $9,000. The operating expenses is salaries and rent, pretty much?
Yes. Heat, light, phone, rent, salaries, paper supplies, travel, meetings. It's, we-
No, I said it was under budget, but it was $9,000 more.
It was a little bit more.
Did you have staff?
No, we did not. We did have some additional expense on per seat that came on. We have, if you, if you would like to have a breakdown of the budget line item, I can certainly provide that. Makes good nighttime reading. We do feel that we have pretty good management, cash management, funds management on the agency on operations. And any of this information is open for a public review. If anybody wants a copy of any of this, just let me know.
Any other questions, Al? Can you remind me again, when is the end of your fiscal year?
Fiscal year is September 30.
September 30, okay, thanks.
So some of the difference in these numbers is that three months between fiscal year and calendar year. We don't like that.
I'd just like to say thank you, Tom, and it looks like if my calculations are right here, the remaining districts will close in about six years, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
The furthest out we are is six years, and I have done a projection, a closeout projection over the next six years. How much increment do we project coming in to pay the remaining balances? And how much, going back to Commissioner, Councilor Thorson's question or comment, how much money would we need to fund the budget over that next six years? I've looked at that as a, more of an exit strategy from a financial standpoint.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you, Tom, very, very much appreciate it. Next item up, Whiskey Flat Subdivision, Mr. Manley.
That's where Knob Creek Street should be.
Thanks for the tip. On my computer. Yeah.
Yeah, Whiskey Flats. Should've named the street Crown.
Knob Creek.
No Creek, Crown.
I like the fact you got that.
That's why you're a boulevard.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. John Manley introducing the Whiskey Flat Subdivision, case file S-15-03. The property owner is Tombstone Investments, LLC, and the applicant rep is Lake City Engineering. The requested action is for City Council to approve the 68 lot R1 zone property for residential development on approximately 17.36 acres. This request was recommended for approval at February's Planning and Zoning Commission Evening. The project location is as you see here, highlighted in red within this infill pocket, so it's a county pocket, so it's always good to get these areas reduced. It happens to be on the northeast corner of Chase and Grange. And looking at the surrounding zoning, it's a mix between the zoning in Nikutney County and the City of Post Falls. What you see with the lighter yellow is R1S, that's your large one-acre lots, it's your residential suburban zoning designation. Your brighter yellow designation is your typical single-family R1 zoning designation. In the green there, what you see are- In the green there, what you see are surrounding, the project is an egg suburban designation within the county, and a darker green being egg zoned properties. The proposed density is 3.9 units per acre, with the water provider being the East Green Acres Irrigation District and the City Post Falls providing sewer. In review of this proposed project, the planning division determined that the lots meet or exceed the minimum lot dimensional standards. The 3.9 lots are dwelling units per acre. It's less than the maximum. Per the R1 zoning district, it permits up to five dwelling units per acre. And that the project is being proposed in three phases. It's fine for subdivisions to be developed in phases, but it needs to be requested as part of subdivision approval. What you see here is the phase breakdown. So the west, 50% more or less is first phase, with Phase Two being along over to the east. I presume the reason why Phase Three is at this location is there's a, currently a single-family home at that, and they're probably more planning around it at this point in Improvements on both Chase and Grange Avenue will include sidewalks. So this will improve the pedestrian connectivity for the area. Currently, you have a subdivision just to the south, and there's only sidewalks along the southern side. So with these improvements, you'll expand the sidewalk network within the City Post Street names have been checked with Nikutney County, and there doesn't see, the proposed names are available. And engineering commented that the access onto Grange from Lot One and 63 shall be prohibited. So when you see here, Lot 63 is about this location of the proposed subdivision, with Lot One being on the southwest corner. Both those are either too close to an intersection or the railroad corridor for access off of Access from Chase Road would be prohibited with the subdivision, and that a common fence will be required to be installed along Chase Road and the Union Pacific Railroad with development of the projected phase. Also, homeowners association is going to be, need to be established to maintain all the common open areas in green space, as well as the sidewalk area, you have that, usually that swell area along the frontage. Vacation of Guy Road right away, south of Tennessee, would need to be completed by a separate council action. So what that is getting to is, with Phase Two, it's presumed that south of that entrance with that phase, there's going to be needed a vacation of the road at this, because the intent is to eliminate a rail crossing and improve the crossing at this location. So in general, it'll be a better situation as far as travel ways through rail corridors. But that that vacation element will be a separate council action. And that the Grange Avenue improvements would be completed with the eastern, with the east boundary with Phase Two. So when you're looking at this map, the total extent along the southern boundary from where Guy used to connect all the way over to Chase will be improved with Phase Two. Regards to water reclamation is that septic service, septic system serving the existing structures would need to coordinate with Panhandle Health and be in conformance with Panhandle Health District if any of those get removed. And that water would be provided by East Green Acres. Police Department did not comment on the proposed project. We did receive public comment, it's attached within the staff report as PC1, that they did want to make light to the fact that train volumes near the area may increase in the future, and that this is a vital and growing rail corridor. So at this time, I'd stand for any questions you have for the proposed project.
John, I have two for you. First one you just addressed, and I know Commissioner Keen had an issue with it, noise abatement from the railroad. It's bad now, and if in fact it's going to become busier, that section of the rail, is there any noise abatement that's taking place? Or, I understand it's people's choice to move, move there, but we live a mile or so away, and it's awfully loud.
As far as I know, I do, I'm not aware of any noise abatement action that's part of the subdivision. It would basically be consistent with other subdivisions in the area that has occurred adjacent to the rail corridor.
Okay. Second question is on a, and I didn't see this in the report, maybe I missed it, but on a 17-acre, 68-home development, is there any requirement for greens, for open space, green space? You mentioned green space, but I didn't see any identified in the plan.
Currently, within the subdivision ordinance, we don't have any open space requirement for parkland or green space as a subdivision. That typically is done with a PUD. So usually with the PUD, they're getting increased density, or they're getting some exception that the developer is getting for, for their needs. In return, there's a 10% open space as part of the PUD. But this is not a PUD, this is a subdivision.
So subdivision rules do not require any? Interesting.
That's something that staff has discussed, so.
That's not unusual. Remember that we also have impact fees that generate funds for acquisition and development of green space throughout the community.
Okay. I never realized that, so after this many years, you think I would have known. Linda?
Just a question, John. Can you go into the street vacation just a little bit more?
So with Phase One, the Guy Road would continue through. So, so what would occur is on Phase Two, they would then, there'd be another vacation request that be applied for, that would come before council to either approve or deny. But the intent is to have the access off of these, these two access points eventually for the travel ways. And so continuing to have two rail crossings in this close proximity was not preferable for the overall safety of the area. I don't know if that answers your concerns.
Not a whole lot of traffic on Guy Road anyway, is there?
No, but if you continue to develop land in the north and around the area, you could increase traffic through that. And that guiding citizens either by foot and/or by vehicle on other means would be preferable than to have another crossing of potential conflict.
I guess I want to follow up on the mayor's comment. Is it not in our comp plan or something? I, I could swear there's something in there that says that subdivisions have to have a park within a quarter mile. We discussed this a couple of years ago with that subdivision at the corner of Poline and Chase.
I know Smart Code has some neighborhood parks within so many distance from each residence. And in the comp plan, it has some guiding policies. But once again, those are guiding policies. It's the code that actually enforces the policy. So if it was desired to require a certain amount of open space with subdivisions, you would modify the code to facilitate that.
You all right?
We're only talking about 68 units, though, so it's, if you do 10% for park space, you're up to 1.7 acres of green space. It's not worth much of anything, so.
The fact that you can in fact collect impact fees to help fund additional parkland acquisition or development.
I guess it just bothers me to think that, you know, subdivision like this is designed for families, and all those kids are not going to have, there's no park. There's no, I mean, not even close. So.
I say Mr. Fair can address the number of parks in that area if you like.
That'd be great.
Please, Dave, and then Carrie, then we'll come back to you.
What's that? Just look that up. Okay. See if I can do it. In this particular spot, we actually, to the west, going along Fisher and just Howell Park, or Park, it's on Howell Road, and it's Park in the Meadows. So that's a five-acre park that we have there. Due north, and I never remember the name of that subdivision.
Crassman or Prairie Meadows?
Not Prairie Meadows, Crown Point.
Crown Point.
Crown Point. There's another five-acre, five-and-a-half-acre park that they're obligated to put in. So we have those two parks within less than a mile to service this area.
Okay. That makes me feel better. Thanks, Dave.
Dave, real quick, were there any idea on the timing of the Crown Point?
We actually have a meeting, I believe it's this week or beginning of next week, with staff to start discussing that. It looks like the next phase that they add, they're going to have to put it in. Possibly their private park, too.
Okay. Thank you. Carrie?
John, back further, you talked about that a homeowners association will need to be established. Who determines whether there needs to be a homeowners association established?
It's required with all Platts to take care of all the common areas. So what you see here along, I'm foreseeing, you know, along the, along Chase, there's probably going to be a common area, and there'll be some common areas internally. So the HOA would maintain those.
So every, every subdivision has to have a homeowners association?
As I currently understand, I can confer with the engineering division if.
Anyone that would have common open space or community's mail or swell.
Or a fence.
So, so any place with common areas or common open space or swells to treat the runoff would need to have a homeowners association.
Well, that is interesting. I didn't know who determined.
Learn them all, aren't we?
Yeah, I didn't know who determined.
Any other questions, John? And you would need a motion from council, correct?
Yes.
I'd move to approve Whiskey Flat Subdivision, file number S-15-03, with the recommendations, facts, and conclusions from staff.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Chairman, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Mr. Manley, Miller Landing Subdivision.
Yes, so the Miller Landing Subdivision, case filed S-15-04. Property owner is Miller Development Group. The applicant's rep is Lake City Engineering. The city council is being requested to review and approve a 27-lot residential development on approximately 6.8 acres. This was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their February public hearing. Project location zoomed out a bit, but you can see this kind of extensive county pocket. This is taking a little bit of chunk out of it, so, you know, any bit is, is making progress on that county pocket. The, looking at the more exact location, you see here highlighted in red on the southeast corner of 16th and Idaho. You have, the subdivision is primarily to the south of 16th. On the north side, there's going to be a remnant, like 0.86 acre lot that would be plotted as a remnant lot with the subdivision. Looking at the surrounding zoning, you have predominantly R1, single-family homes, and you have egg suburban lands just to the east within the county as part of that county pocket. Just to the south, you got a little bit of CCS and some limited commercial, with some mixed residential zoning further to the south. The proposed density is about four units per acre. The water be provided by City Post Falls, and the sewer being provided by City Post Falls as well. The findings and conditions as part of the Planning and Zoning's public hearing got a little discombobulated a little bit, so I'm going to go over that briefly with you. The nutshell is, initially, when it went before the Planning and Zoning Commission, there is, when you go back to this commercial, the code requires some buffering between the residential uses and that commercial uses. And so initially, it was proposed as a buffer to be provided within a tract, a land to be owned and maintained by the private homeowners association. So the findings and conditions have been modified by request of the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval, or recommendation for approval, is that the buffer yard be provided within an easement in favor of a homeowners association over and across the affected lots that can be removed in the event the code requirement changes. So one was as a tract, this one here would be as an easement, and done in a fashion. So if the code ever changes, it can be released and be of no concern of anybody. Also, what you see here is D11 is just a technical condition that says that this proposed change to the proposed subdivision is just a minor change. Any other changes would just have to follow code for changes or modifications to a proposed subdivision.
So is the effect, there's no HOA then?
No, there'll be a HOA with the subdivision, because they do have some common areas. Just this strip of land wouldn't be done as a tract, because it created a little awkward corridor.
Okay.
If you do a 15-foot tract, now you have a fence line, and it gets fairly deep, and so maintaining it, and then you plant trees in it, and it's just, it becomes an awkward situation long-term. Versus here, it would become more or less probably a person's backyard, whatever tree they plant for the buffer. Long-term, they may cut a tree down, replace it with an apple tree. Well, that potentially wouldn't be in conformance with the buffer yard requirements. If, as an easement, someone could then release interest of that potentially in the future, if the code changed, then code enforcement and of that potential non-compliance would be easier to, to deal with, as it would be a non-issue.
How many lots does this affect?
See, I'll try to, see if I got the proposed. Shoot. I think it's only like, about, if I were to, six, thinking off the top of my head, so it's not a lot. But it was enough to be a concern. So in review of the, sorry, I lost my train of thought there.
Sorry to screw you up.
Yeah, I got a little, that's okay, I'm recovering. So in looking at the surrounding zoning, taking that in consideration, staff felt like the proposed subdivision was consistent and compatible. The lots met or exceeded the minimum lot size. The four dwelling units per acre was less than the maximum allowed. And didn't want to pay note that the development is intended to be constructed in a single phase. Also, being that, as I stated, an infill island, the comp plan actually stresses an importance for areas that are infill. Engineering commented in that the proposed roadway cross-sections are in conformance with the city's design standards, and the road layout would allow for the continuation to adjoining properties in a manner that would support compatible land uses. Driveway access to Idaho Street and 16th Avenue would be prohibited. They'll get access to the subdivision off 16th as proposed, but they just want to be able to have direct access to their residences off either one of those streets. Regards to the water reclamation, the facilities are available, and there is capacity, sufficient capacity for the proposed development, and the proposed layout appears to be in conformance with the city's water reclamation master plan. Facilities are available from medical court. And that in regards to water, that the sizing and layout of the proposed domestic system would be acceptable, and that the City of Post Falls has the capacity to provide necessary service for this project. I did not receive any of the comments from any of the city departments, and I stand for any questions you have on this proposed project.
Any questions, John? Al?
John, I'm curious about that little wedge of land to the north of this project. It's unbuiltable, is that correct?
It's technically zoned R1.
So somebody could build a house in there?
Technically, they would have that right. Yes.
Why are you saying technically?
Well, because that's, because it would be able to. It's divested right as an underlying zone to construct a single-family home.
But are you saying that it would be illogical for somebody to try to do that? Or is it big enough to accommodate setbacks and everything?
You could accommodate setbacks on it.
So it's, so could end up with a house there?
Correct.
Okay.
Your own island.
Yeah.
Linda?
Just to follow up with that, that is actually the corner of Idaho and 16th. And if you're saying that you can't have any access from your home onto Idaho or 16th, doesn't that make that lot not buildable?
Yeah.
It's right on the corner.
Yeah, it is.
Says, right there, says no driveway access shall be prohibited from Idaho and 16th. So if that piece of property is part of this subdivision, no, you can't build on it, because you can't get to it.
What happened with 16th Street when we changed that? Did they, did they dig that all up and fill it in?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, they have now a sidewalk, so they've planted grass, and now you just see a sidewalk, and it's a planted grass area where 16th used to be.
Okay. So to Linda's point, then, you can't really build on that. I guess what I was...
That's that condition, I guess the condition that that lot could have access outside of the, I think the focus of that comment was on their lower 27, but as stated, and I'll let Bill maybe come up and comment on that regard.
I guess what I was concerned about was, I guess I'd be happier if there was a house there than just end up being a, almost an acre of weeds.
Right. If it was a commercial piece, it would obviously be provided a driveway access. For a single residence like this, where they have no other way to get to the roadway on a lot like that, we would provide an access onto 16th as opposed to Greensbury. So we'd provide one access for them. We'd try to work with them with site plan review, so it was an access on a major roadway like that where they pull straight out as opposed to backing out into the roadway as some of the other projects do. But we would provide somebody a single access to that site. As opposed to we do on a residential area that has lot after lot after lot after lot, and everybody is backing out into those, those are very problematic. But for a small lot like this, we would provide a single access to it, and wouldn't take an access, it could be developed, to tell somebody they could not have an access on it, so...
Now, everybody's going to want to buy that, build it up there.
I've got a question on the, if you can flip back to the side on the sewer, or some at the end of it that I...
Who's providing it?
Something that was, it appears to be in conformance, and then something about elevations, any flip signs?
That's to the, on the south.
Appears to be in conformance, elevation should be verified with some middle of the structure. So if the elevations aren't correct, then what?
So as we go from here, when they, they would not get subdivision plan approval, they wouldn't get construction plan approval. So as they were to move forward from here, they have a general conformance layout of the project, and show where sewer and water lines are going to go. But when they actually get into the actual design of the project, and survey it and lay it out to a detail that somebody would construct it, before we would approve it, we would need to know that the plans, that those elevations work, and that that subdivision will drain properly through that. So that's something that they actually would do through that final part of design.
And if the elevations don't work, then what? Doesn't happen?
Then the construction plans would not get approved. So they've obviously done enough work to, in their own minds, to warrant moving the project forward and believe that it will...
There'd be no obligation on the city's part to alter our infrastructure to make it work, right?
No, it'd be their obligation to make it work, correct?
Thank you.
Any other questions, Bill or John? Not entertain a motion?
I'd move to approve Miller's Landing subdivision, file number S-15-04, citing the conditions and conclusions from staff, and also, can we put some sort of asterisk or something in that? That really bothers me, that corner lot and that lack of access being spelled out in this. And then, Warren, can we make that, put that in the motion?
Let's hear from Mr. Wilson. Can the motion be conditioned, or do you want to hear from?
Go ahead on the question of whether the condition can be amended.
Yeah, I was just looking up the lot and block number really quick, so we can make sure we can flag it appropriately.
It's Lot 1, Block 4.
Yeah, you're right, so, yeah.
Mayor Jacobs and members of the council, we would, I think that's a good concern, and staff would recommend that condition number four be amended to state lot access to or from 16th or Idaho Street shall be prohibited on the plat except for Lot 1, Block 4 is subject to review and approval by the city engineer.
Okay, that's fine. That's exactly what I meant, thank you.
We have a motion, a second. Thank you very much, both of you. Further discussion. CNN Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next up is comprehensive plan amendment to change things up. We're going to have Mr. Manley present. Good night, John.
It is, it is. So, yes, Post Falls Comprehensive Plan map amendment. Idaho Vineyard Company is requesting this map amendment. The applicant's rep is Rand Wickman. Requested action is to review and approve the proposed map amendment from residential to commercial. If you look on this slide here, where you see it outlined, that's the area being requested. What you see underneath is the yellow, that's the current residential designation on the future land use map. So the request is to turn it red, more or less, as commercial. It would, staffs reviewed this and found that the proposed change would be compatible and consistent with the surrounding land uses in the area. You have mostly commercial north of I-90, and to the east of the southeast interchange, you have, as you see here, industrial zone designation, but most of those uses along a southeast way are commercial of nature. So the proposed commercial designation would be consistent with the surrounding environment. Engineering Division reviewed this, and they found that it would not have any significant impact on the city's water, water reclamation, water reclamation or transportation systems, and that the anticipated land uses are consistent with the assumptions contained in the respective city master plans. I really don't have much more to expand on this.
Comment your questions, John? CNN, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve Idaho Vineyard Company Comprehensive Plan map amendment, number MA-16-01.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. CNN Shannon, please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
While I have no financial interest or anything to do with that open air company, I'm related to the people that own it, so I will abstain.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Motion passes, thanks, Joe. Thank you, John. Next up are ordinances and resolutions. Tonight, we have none. And administrative staff reports, Strategic Plan Annual Accomplishment Report 2015. Kelly?
Aye. Good evening, mayor and council. Kelly Satters, Planning Specialist. I'm here tonight to present the 2015 Annual Accomplishments Report for the city's strategic plan. The plan was adopted by city council in February 2013, and is an internal action plan for the city of Post Falls that reflects the top priorities of the community for a five-year timeframe. The strategic plan established a vision for the future, provides clear direction for achieving the goals, and establishes priorities and measurable targets. The city has successfully completed the third year of the plan. This annual report summarizes the city's accomplishments in 2015 organized by the plan's five goals which are here. Economic and business vitality, well-planned and livable community, quality educational, recreational, and lifestyle opportunities, sense of community, and safe community. For each of the following slides addressing these five goals, I will go over a few highlighted accomplishments. Economic and business vitality. A brand was established for the Parks and Recs Department. Experience Post Falls Parks and Recreation. The city partnered with the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism to place an ad in the Horizon Airlines magazine featuring Idaho this year. Well-planned and livable community. There were several street projects completed which are listed in the full report. The water reclamation system collection master plan was completed. Implementation of five-year CIP projects were completed with the water supply projects. Quality educational, recreational, and lifestyle opportunities. The Parks and Recs Department created rafting, kayaking, and paddleboard classes, and partnered with the local breweries to do a Shoes and Brew's 5K run. Sense of community. The police department started a movie night out and coffee with the cop programs. Max the Fish was placed on Spokane Street. An additional signage for pedestrians and cyclist's safety were installed throughout the city. Safe community. The police department deployed a new speed device and reached out to local medical facilities and businesses to educate and evaluate security measures. The neighborhood watch program was revitalized. Crime prevention workshops were held with senior citizens, home, and business owners. And the West Side Police Department substation is currently underway with the completion date of early 2016. There are many ongoing efforts with the strategic plan which were listed in the full report. Where can you find the strategic plan annual report? It is located on the city website homepage by using three different links, the document center, or using the search button, or under quick links. The annual report can be found on the lower right-hand side of the strategic plan webpage. That concludes my brief overview of the annual 2015 report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Any questions? Good job. Linda?
I don't have a question, but I would just like to thank you for that, Kelly, very much.
You're welcome.
That was great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kelly has taken on a number of new tasks over the last year as things have kind of ramped up downstairs, and as you recall, I think about three or four months ago, we actually changed her position to include some of these items, and she's doing an excellent job.
Thank you very much. Well done. Next item up, mayor comments. The city of Post Falls was again named Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation, and was also named as a Growth Award winner. These honors were achieved by the city's practice of having an urban forestry division, a tree care ordinance, annual community forestry budget of at least $2 per capita, and an Arbor Day observations and proclamation. I would like to thank our forester, thank our forester Preston Hill, and Assistant Forester Nina Eckberg for their many efforts in the city's tree maintenance, citizen education, events, and division management. Also, there was a great article in the press over the weekend talking about basically what I would consider the honor of the badge between the police department and the fire department. I thought the article was well-written. Post Falls was well-represented, good comments, so the article was nice, and again, and we appreciate all the efforts from both departments and all you do for our community. I don't want to steal Mr. Wolf's thunder, but like to wish NIC good luck. I think in the, we're trying to get him out of here, I think in the two years I played at NIC, we may have almost totaled the number of wins they had this year, but it took us two to do it. And then I wanted to read a letter I received. It says, "Hello, Ron, I hope all is well. I just wanted to write a quick note to express my gratitude for the Community Development Department. I've interacted with the building and planning departments in each municipality. All I can say is that Post Falls Community Development Department is far and away the most team-minded I've ever worked with. I say team because I feel that's what we are all on. We must work hand in hand when it comes to constructing a better community. Just a few weeks ago, after looking at my schedule and trying to keep my employees lined up with work, I realized I had about a two-day gap that I needed to fill to keep them busy. My current task list was just about wrapped up. However, I had a pending permit which I, if I could get from the building department, would solve my problem and give me and my guys some work to keep moving on. After calling the building department, I learned that Justin Miller was out of the office for a few days, which meant no, capital no, chance of getting the permit I was hoping for. However, the first thing the following morning, I received a call that my permit was ready to be picked up. I don't know how he did it. If he came in on his days off or work from home, I don't know. I just know that he went above and beyond to help keep people in this community working. I believe that is worth commending. Thank you again for the excellent team you have assembled down at the Community Development Department. All the best, Darrell Wilder." So Justin, thank you very much for your efforts and the whole department's efforts. I think that's all the comments I have. Anyone else?
It warms my heart to hear letters like that. Good job.
You know, we have issues that will arise, people that aren't happy. You get them hooked up with the right people, provide alternatives, and they may not get the answers they want, but they know they're heard, they know they're listened to, and I think they appreciate it. And again, we get letters like that, that speaks volumes for our community. So when people ask me how it is being mayor, I says, "It's wonderful, and I mean it." So thank you very much. No other comments? I would entertain the next motion, which is, all those in favor. Me and Ajorn, thank you very much.